Thank you very much. If we can have a short moment of silence for all the military out there and everybody going through the issues with COVID virus. Thank you. We're going to roll call and I'll read the commissioners off as I see you. And then I'll go back to other members of the that are on board here. Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
Commissioner Juzinski.
Here.
Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
We also have town manager Bill Zopra with us.
Sure.
The town clerk Kate Benazak.
Here.
I said it right this time, Kate?
Yes, you did.
You think I did? And Kate Financial Clerk, excuse me, the town financial clerk, Gina Gossett. And we have Mr. Majinsky with us. Oh, excuse me. We have the town attorney, Mr. Townsend. And we have the person who's appealing for, not appealing, or has applied for conditional use permit, Mr. Majinsky on board. And Dawn Hanks is in her office and she's on board.
Yes, I am.
We can see, we can hear you, but we don't have a picture.
I know. I don't have a camera.
Okay. I'll hear motion to accept the adoption of the agenda.
Motion.
They move by Commissioner Bauer. There are second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juzinski, probably moved in second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? Unanimous? Kate, do we have anybody on for public comment right now? You're muted, Kate.
Sorry. No, no one in the waiting room.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead then and I'll turn it over to our town attorney to open the public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Before we begin, I thought I would remind the commissioners and explain to the applicant that the process that follows whenever there is a change to an existing use is for the commissioners to convene a public hearing. And in the vast majority of cases, refer the applications to the planning commission as they're required to be referred to the planning commission as a zoning change. And the planning commission would conduct their own public hearing and make recommendations to counsel, which would convene another public hearing before acting on the approval of the application. The exception to that rule is found in 18573B, which says that the commissioners can approve a change in zoning if they make a determination that the proposed change is not significant. And that determination has to be made unanimously. And that's rare, rarely the case that 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 provision is implicated, but it is possible. So what we have before us on the agenda is a public hearing on an ordinance to approve a conditional use application submitted by Gee Bowls, Inc. and Keith Mashinsky for an eatery operation to be located in what is currently the apparel shop located on the property of 1809 Coastal Highway Dewey Beach, which is the Bottling Cork establishment, as I understand it. It seems to me that the most appropriate thing to do before hearing from any public, if there are any public, is that we would ask for the applicant to describe what it is they're seeking to do. And if anyone else, though, on staff prior to that wishes to make any opening remarks, we could take those into consideration either before or after we hear from the applicant. So with that, I guess we'll turn it over to Mr. Mashinsky.
All right, thank you. So in short, what we're trying to do is convert the 159 square feet that used to be the T-shirt shop of the Bottling Cork into our Playables restaurant. I don't, I'm not sure if anyone is familiar with Playables. We do have a location in Rehoboth Beach. We also have two others in Delaware in Middletown and in Newark. So essentially, what we are trying to do is convert that space into a commercial kitchen where it would be takeout only for our customers. We will not be serving alcohol. I can provide our menu, which if anyone has ever eaten there, we have things such as smoothies, juices, acai bowls, things of that nature. All super healthy foods, and I think would be a very nice addition to the town of Dewey. Our, our plans are very minimal in terms of construction. We're looking at something like maybe a two-week timeframe to convert and, and all we're doing is changing plumbing, or I should say adding plumbing and adding refrigeration and electrical outlets. That's all we would have to do in order to convert that space right there. Like I said, the 159 square feet on the end of the Bottling Cork to make that doable for us to serve our customers.
At this, at this point, I'll ask the commissioners if they have any questions for Mr. Mashinsky. Or they wish to hold their questions until after we determine whether there are any public who wish to be heard.
Okay.
Wait for the public.
All right. So Ms. Benazak?
Yes, still no one in the waiting room. Oh, hold on. As soon as I said that, David Moskowitz.
All right. Could you, could you bring him in, please?
Yep.
Mr. Moskowitz, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and we can hear you. So please share your comments with us.
Yeah, my name is David Moskowitz. I'm a full-time resident. I live and work in Dewey Beach. I think Playables is a great concept. The Hungry Shock already does this across the street. And hopefully there's room for a similar business and they don't cannibalize each other like we've seen with the ice cream and cheesesteak shops. But I think it's a great concept, but it's not the business that the issue. A lot of applicants try to submit things at the last minute, hoping for leeway they wouldn't have if they submitted it early. And if you look at the code, chapter 18525 dash four, there C, which comes from ordinance 724, per recommendation of the planning commission, it states, "A minimum of one handicap unisex restroom shall be provided. Said restroom shall have unimpeded access directly from the public area of the eatery and not through the food preparation area or storage area." The plans that was posted online do not show a unisex bathroom, so I'm assuming that not one, but if I'm mistaken, I apologize. And the commissioners would say it's nonsensical for this application. That's not right because what about the existing businesses? Zoning should be consistent, so the same rules should apply for all, or they should apply for none. If the commissioners want to revisit the code or ordinance on unisex bathrooms, you need to have a new town meeting and vote to send that to P and Z and get back their feedback. So it applies for all businesses, not just for one. And Rehoboth has lots of takeout windows, but they have multiple public bathroom near those windows. We only have one public bathroom and it's not near this location. It's all the way at the Hyatt. And then a secondary question is, would anyone want to order from a food business without a bathroom for their employees? Hopefully they aren't wearing diapers like Amazon employees, but and it looks like the customers would also be ordering and waiting on the public sidewalk, which is very narrow and busy. How do people with wheelchairs get by? Does foot traffic then shift to the street after dark? Where will the trash go? And a lot of these concerns need to start with P and Z, but it also has to be in the code and follow the ordinance that it's, that they have that bathroom in order to be that eatery. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Moskowitz. Any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Moskowitz? Thank you. Anyone else in the waiting room?
Not at this time.
All right. Any commissioners which wish to be heard at this point? Or have any questions for staff or myself? Mr. Bauer?
Yeah, for Mr. Mashinsky, thank you very much for, for applying to it. My daughter eats at your establishment up in Rehoboth all the time, so I'm familiar with the, you know, it's more than a concept. It's actually, it's a good business and, you know, it's a good, healthy food choice and something I think could be an asset to the town. But I do understand the, the way our code reads as far as the bathroom. My understanding is that the employees weren't going to have a bathroom. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I have spoken with the gentleman who owned the Bottling Cork and they have given us access to, they have an office which has a, an exterior door right there on Route One, which is about 20 feet from our shop that they have given access to our employees to use. So that is correct.
Yeah, because I mean, I think it's important, you know, employees are washing hands and things like that, especially in your business. I'm sure you want them to do that as well. So that the employee bathroom is not an issue if they have access to it. But it's a public one and, and I went back and looked at ordinance 724. It looks like we put that in place in January 9th, 2016. And I went down A through H and, you know, there's some conditions there. Yeah, but, but as I, as I'm thinking about it, I mean, this is, this is the world we knew in 2016 and the world we know in 2021 is a different, you know, it's a little different. If you would have told me that takeout was going to be a big thing starting now or starting 2020, I would say, you know, maybe. I, I had no idea, but I think, I think it's a good asset. But I think it would cause us to maybe revisit and update our code if we choose to. So I'm not sure that applies, and Fred, you can help me out on this. We would, if, if we did choose to change, you know, the restrictions on an eatery, sort of like Rehoboth does. You got Core Brothers, you got Thrashers, you got, you know, you number of ice cream places, none of which have bathrooms, but they're handing something out the window to somebody. You know, I think we, we would probably need a, a different ordinance in addition to 724 or, or not. And that's, that's the majority, you know, depending on how the commissioners look at this thing. But that's my only thoughts on, on, on this, you know, it's, it's a good product. I think it would be well accepted and you know, it's, there's a lot, there's plenty of people eating healthy these days, so I think, I think you'd do well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I think there was a, I think there was a question of Mr. Townsend there. Mr. Bauer, I'm going to yield back to you and, and say, what was the question you had of Mr. Townsend?
So let's, let's say if, if by chance we agreed to, you know, we have a restriction for eateries. And I understand if someone's coming into a building and they need to have a place to go to the bathroom, that's the unisex bathroom. However, if no one's coming into the building, we're providing a public bathroom for somebody that's not going to be able to go into the building. And, you know, so it doesn't, you know, that maybe we need to write a different ordinance other than what we have in place on 724 if we choose that we want to move forward and allow something like this.
So we had an identical situation really not that long ago with regard to the dog sitting establishment, which we weren't authorized by our code at the time to approve until after we amended our code. And it was a lengthy process, as you know, I think the process went as smoothly as it could go. But it was still lengthy because it requires, because it's a change to your zoning code. It requires referral of the question to the planning commission who has to hold a public hearing. And then refer to the commissioners for action. They have to hold, you have to hold a public hearing. And then the matter of the pending application needs to be heard by the planning commission if it's deemed to be a significant change. Or I should say, if it's not deemed to be an insignificant change. And then back to the commissioners again. So it's possible and it's been done and however, it is, it is a process.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was asking on that.
Mr. Persinger, I think had his finger up first.
Yeah, I did. I think that's, the bathroom issue is, is one that, that concerns me. It's, it's not included there and, and there's nothing that I can see in the code that would allow us to approve a business like this without providing a bathroom facility. Even for employees, it seems to me that there's a question. I mean, if you're, if you're under 21, you can't go into the Bottling Cork. So you would have to, all the employees, I think, for this establishment would have to be over 21 or 20, at least 21. So that seems to be an issue. The other thing that I noted, it looks like the water heater for this business, this proposed business is actually outside the business. It's actually in the Bottling Cork. So I'm, it seems to me that you're sharing the, the same water heater. Maybe that's not a problem. I, I don't know, but I just raised it. It's, it seems unusual. It's something I have not seen before. So, you know, I'm a little unclear with the, with the process. One other point, one other issue I wanted to raise also, something that David Moskowitz referred to, and the, the space just outside the, the T-shirt, what's now the T-shirt shop. Is there any space there that actually belongs to the property owner or is that all public right of way? I don't know. You may not know the answer to that, but I think that's a question that should be explored as well.
Since keep in, in terms of the sidewalk, is that what you mean?
Yes. Is, is that, is there anything there that belongs to the property owner or is that all public right of way, public space?
That's a really good question. Ms. Hanks and I measured that sidewalk. I believe that sidewalk's about eight feet at that portion, and I believe public sidewalk might be five feet. So a possible three-foot section.
Okay. I, I have to hold on the rest of this. I, unfortunately, I have to drop off this just for a few, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Persinger. You can't hear me. Mr. Cook?
Well, Mr. Juzinski has had his hand up before me. I'd like to go after him.
All right.
Neil always likes to go after me.
He wants the last word.
Exactly, exactly. So, so Fred, I didn't really understand coming into this meeting. So what we would have to do if we were going to do something today is we would actually have to say that not having a bathroom is somehow de minimis and change the zoning code or?
No. So we, we would have, the, the council would have to confirm or move unanimously that the change from a T-shirt shop to an eatery is not significant and therefore doesn't require a recommendation from the planning commission.
Okay, I gotcha. All right. All right. So, all right. So for Mr. Mashinsky, I have a, a couple, I guess, a couple of questions. On the first one is, you're obviously not doing anything inside, so you're going to serve through a window facing the sidewalk on Route One, correct?
That has yet to been, to be determined. There's also a window that faces the parking lot where the Dewey Beach Liquors is. We could also serve through that window as well.
Okay. Because what I was kind of thinking is the, the sidewalk that faces Route One, there's obviously a lot of pedestrian traffic. People need to be able to stand somewhere and, you know, wait, you know, for their bowls and whatnot while they're being made. So I was kind of wondering about that aspect of it. And then the, the other aspect is will, you know, your door, your kind of, your back door kind of comes from where the entrance to the Bottling Cork is. Will, will people be allowed to, to take the bowls and take them into the Bottling Cork? Or is that going to be? No?
No, no, we've already, we've already confirmed with the owners that they do not want that occurring.
Okay. That's enough food service. That was my, that was my main questions. Thanks.
Sure. If you don't mind, I'd like to address the, the bathroom question just for clarification. So for right now, it's an exterior entrance from the Bottling Cork that only goes into an office. It does not go into the actual Bottling Cork. That's the one that our employees would be using. The other part about the water heater is they have about a 15-gallon water heater in there that they've been using for, I can't even say how many years, to supply the entire bar that they use. We're going to be upgrading to, I believe, to an 80-gallon water tank that we're both going to be using, which I believe should more than suffice the amount of water needs that we're going to have in our facility.
Thank you, Mr. Mashinsky. And that was my impression that the restroom you were talking about was not in a patron area of the Bottling Cork. It was in an office, and I think that is significant. So either Mr. Stevens is going to be heard from or Mr. Cook is going.
Well, Mr. Cook had his hand up first, so I'll, I'll wait.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. I appreciate that. I would have let you go though. I'm, I'm an honorable person. I think I am anyway. I, I want Mr. Townsend to address something that bothers me. I mean, we keep saying employee bathroom, employee bathroom, but our code is intended for employees and patron bathroom, public bathroom. Is that correct, Mr. Townsend?
Well, as Mr. Bauer put it, we, there is a provision here that requires of eateries that a minimum of one handicap unisex bathroom shall be provided. If this is, that this establishment is not a restaurant. It is, appears to be an application to operate an eatery. I don't know of any other classification that works. And as our code currently reads, I believe that's a patron. I think that can only be interpreted to mean to be a patron bathroom. So.
Yeah, and Fred, if I can.
Wait a minute. I just, this was my turn. I, I, we consistently have said employees, employees and employees, or it would be over 21, blah, 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 or would not be, but that's not the point now. The point is, as I understand it, it's an employee and patron bathroom. And, you know, that we've required it of all other facilities in town as far as I know. And I think, you know, I think the only thing that's possible here, we cannot vote to proceed because we would then be going against our own law, our own regulation. We can, we can vote to or indicate that it is not an insignificant change and therefore refer to planning and zoning, but we would also have to, at some time before we could get this done, refer a change of the code to accept, carry out only facilities without a bathroom. So there's two items that we, I, I think I'm right, Mr. Townsend. Is that correct?
I think you're right. If, but they are separate issues. So first of all, I want to explain just quickly that it was Mr. Moskowitz during the public hearing who raised the issue of whether the employees would have access to a bathroom. And it was Mr. Mashinsky who said yes and explained the circumstances. There's clearly going to be a sink in the establishment that the employees could use for sanitary reasons, but as far as the bathroom's concerned, they'd have to leave the premises. If it, it appears that, less some argument that could be made that by the applicant that I'm not aware of, there is a requirement to provide a patron bathroom in our code. So if this group wants to consider at a sep, at a separate hearing to amend its code, then there's a process to follow. But we can't do them simultaneously. We, we have to, we'd have to amend the code first in order to be able to ultimately grant the application that we have before us. Does that answer your question, Mr. Mr. Cook?
Thank you very much. I think my, my fellow gentlemen have their hands up, beginning with Mr. Stevens.
Right. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I, I guess I look at this a little different. I'll throw it out to commissioners as an eatery. I, I don't look at this any different than, and nothing against you, Mr. Majinsky, I'm just trying to find a, maybe trying to find a loophole for you. So you know, this is, if the convenience store or little store was to sell hot dogs by putting a hot dog on a bun, they need to have a bathroom. You know, I'll, I'll just ask that question because the answer is no, because no one's eating it on premise. If, and they are also selling food out of refrigerators. Now, the only difference here is Mr. Majinsky is actually combining those ingredients. And it's not, you know, yogurt or, you know, it's, it's other ingredients that be combined. They're not eating it on premise. So I don't think eatery is actually part of the code. I think it's more, it's a, it's almost like a commissary. It's a place to buy products and take it with you. So, and I guess, Mr. Majinsky, is it possible that, or is it possible that the product could be made, and I'm not suggesting this, could be made of Rehoboth? And brought in where people buy it, or does it have to be made on the premise at the time of order?
Mike, the mic is off.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry about that. It would have to be made onsite. There's, it's it's a frozen product, so by the time it would get to Dewey, it'd be melted and not very good.
But that, that's my only point. It's, it's no different. They're, they're bringing stuff together. No one's going on premise to eat. Mr. Moskowitz did have a right-of-way comment and just to address that, I believe we do have another takeout window. Not more than 100 yards away in what is probably the Woody's Crab Count, crab place right on the road there, too.
They have a bathroom.
Right. I'm saying from a right-of-way, Mr. Mayor, from a right-of-way issue.
Sorry.
Sorry. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. I saw, Mr. Bauer?
And Fred's question for you. This might be something for us to research. How does Rehoboth do it for, like Core Brothers, for example? I mean, I, these are all considered eateries in Rehoboth's code, I'm sure. But, you know, I, I don't think this would be the last request we'll ever get for somebody to want to put out a takeout business. I think this is the first one we're, we're, we're having to take a look at. So I'm just thinking down the road, is, if, if takeout is here to stay, we're probably going to get faced with this question. And, you know, we don't, you know, do we designate this as an eatery that people can come inside? And this is an eatery that people cannot come inside? And obviously, if there's no public bathroom and you're not allowed inside, even if you had a public bathroom, you're still not allowed inside. So it'd be making somebody put a public bathroom in without access to it. That doesn't, that doesn't square up with me very well. So how does Rehoboth do it?
Yeah. So I don't know that there's a, an, an answer to the question that we could seek from reviewing the Rehoboth code. It's just, it's just a fact that our code doesn't require indoor seating for an eatery. So you don't have to provide any patron area. But our restroom requirement isn't conditioned upon providing indoor seating. So you know, Rehoboth clearly does not have that provision or it's theoretically possible that all those establishments have been in business for many, many, many years and are considered legal non-conforming.
Right.
Certainly some of them would fit that classification, but I can't imagine that all of them would.
Yeah, I mean, they have dozens of places that are just, they have the thing out the window to you. So.
That's right. That they'd have a great many.
Yeah, it's like eatery one and eatery two, you know, there's, this is a requirement for eatery one. This is what eatery two qualifies as. That's my, that's my only thought on it. Somebody has to do it. I mean, they do it in Bethany, too. I mean, this isn't the first beach town to ever have this kind of request.
Anyone else? Mr. Persinger? Sorry.
Yeah, I, I think that the, the problem here is this, this is not about what we would like to see or what we would like to have. It's, it's what we can do according to the code. You know, I, I think this is a, you know, certainly a very good business to have. Very nice food product addition to the, to the Townsend offerings. But, you know, if, if we want to change the code, it would be perfectly reasonable to do so. It's just, there's a process to do that and, and we have to, we have to go through that if we want to make that kind of change.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Juzinski?
My question was for Mr. Townsend specifically around the process. My question was for Mr. Townsend specifically around process. You mentioned, you know, obviously that this has to be referred to planning and zoning if we say it's not a minimal change. And you also mentioned that we have to do a zoning change to what's required in an eatery or what have you, if an eatery doesn't have seating inside. Can these be done in parallel, or do they have to be done sequentially?
Well, at, at the very least, I think the planning commission would have to make a recommendation of either conditional approval or, or sort of a conditional denial. Saying until such time as you amend your code, we, we recommend against. Granting a. A conditional use approval for, for an eatery. So I think there could be some. Parallel action, but, you know, for it to be the cleanest, we'd like, you'd like to. Advance an application that has some prospect of success, and right now, we've got a problem.
So I guess my question really was like, if this goes to planning and zoning. Can they have a meeting where they have a public hearing on the change of the zoning code? And then follow it in that same meeting with a public hearing on this change, or do, or do they have to be done somehow separately?
That's an interesting question. I think the answer is they probably can be done. I don't think there's a reason that they can't be done at the same meeting. However, as you know, the planning commission can't amend the code. So they're, they're going to have to qualify any recommendation they make, they make based on. Whether or not council ultimately amends the code. So they could be, in theory, they could be completely in favor of both this project and the code amendment. But to recommend. Approval of this project. It would have to be conditioned upon councils amending the code.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Maschinsky, just a quick question. Is, there is no. And I know, there you go, thank you. There, there is no prospect for a patron bathroom on this site. Is that right? That's, that's, that's not something you can do.
Um, it's, it's difficult right now. What we're in the works of trying to, to speak to, you know, the owners of the bottle and cork is. Where we're using the bathroom, our employees will be using the bathroom now, actually making that our bathroom, instead of them having to come into the office. But I don't think that's something that can be done very easily.
Okay. All right. So any further questions for Mr. Maschinsky? If not, we can close the public hearing. I guess one last. Request of Ms. Banazak, is there anybody in the waiting room who wishes to be heard?
There is not at this time, no.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Townsend, is, is there any way to, to get a conditional use, a temporary conditional use? Until a decision is made, anything like that from the commissioners?
The, there, there isn't. The commissioners are going to need to refer your application to the planning commission. Unless they were to conclude that the change in use from the t-shirt shop to. Plyables is, is not legally significant.
Sure, and then, and this is just me asking what, as far as the timeline goes, I know that we are on a crunch for. The summertime here, which is obviously the busy season. What kind of timeline would we be looking at for that?
Well. The, the timeline is dependent upon, not just how quickly things can be done, but how quickly they do get done. So in, in, again. I think you've heard some favorable comments from council about both your use and maybe the prospect of revisiting. Whether that's an appropriate condition for an eatery and whether we want to discourage anyone from operating a business like yours. In, in Dewey, but. The, the approval, it looks like can't be granted. Until such time as the code is amended, and until the code's amended, I can't tell you how long that's going to, going to take. It, it could take as little as. Forty-five to sixty days, but. We can't presume that that change will even pass. Despite the favorable comments that, that we've heard.
Understood.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. Cook, Mayor Cook, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
All right, the public hearing has been closed. We're now picked up first item of discussion with the discussion possibly vote to approve an ordinance. To approve conditional use application submitted by G Bowles Incorporated, Chief Maschinsky, Maschinsky, excuse me. For an eatery operation to be located in what is currently the apparel shop located on the property of eighteen oh nine Coastal Highway Dewey Beach. Delaware one nine nine seven one. And Mr. Townsend, as I understand it now, we first have to understand. Whether all the commissioners unanimously agree that this is not an insignificant. Change of condition.
So I would put it this way, that either the appropriate thing for you to do is to refer the matter to the planning commission. Or receive a motion. From one of the commissioners that seconded indicating that there's. A feeling that this is not a significant change. And then you, then you would determine how the council feels about it. So in the absence of, of that motion, I think you can ask for a motion to revert to planning commission.
Is there, Mr. Bauer?
Yeah, what I think we should do, is I'd like to make a motion to have the planning commission take a look at. Trying to, Fred, help me out with the language on this. Try to make a distinction between a takeout business and an eatery. I, I don't, I'm not using the right terms on it, but to, to take up that subject and. And, you know, try to do something more like they do in Rehoboth and, and other beach towns as far as, you know, when you have a takeout window.
Well, I, I'm going to interrupt just a little bit. If Mr. Townsend could re-explain what he just said a moment ago, and whether what you're asking is in. Is in coordination with what he said. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, so the agenda is. Is noticing the meeting on the application for an eatery. So. I think we need a motion that relates to this particular application. But I, I wouldn't say that this group couldn't. Indicate that they'd like us to, they'd like planning commission to consider. Addressing the issues that you raised during, that were raised during the public hearing. With an amendment to its zoning code, and that could, that process could be begun. But what's in order now is some kind of a motion on this application.
In other words, we're not having a motion to change the zoning code. Where we need to have a motion to say it either is or is not significant. And, or, or a motion to advance it to the planning and zoning committee who would then have to. They cannot vote, they cannot say it can go against the law, let's put it that way. They cannot go against the regulation.
No, I mean, I think it's significant, but. But I think it's two steps there, yeah. But I mean, based on what our laws are today, I don't see any, you know. I don't see any way we could do it any differently than that.
So are you making a motion? No?
No, nope.
Is there anyone that's willing to make a motion? Well, then, Mr. Townsend, can the chair? Now I'm, now I see Mr. Maschinsky, and then Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can make a motion that we refer this application for conditional use to planning and zoning. But that planning and zoning also consider drafting a change to the ordinance of definitions of an eatery. For, that do not have seating and potentially make changes for eateries that do not have seating.
There's a, is that a second, Mr. Stevens? There's a motion as second on the floor. I just want clarification, Mr. Townsend. Can we, can we send, we're here because of the eatery application, can we also request them at the same time to look into changing the regulation?
I, I think, I think you can. In fact, I don't think you need to be as formal as making it part of this motion. I, I think. You can direct the planning commission to get to work on that as just part of the minutes of this meeting. Even before they're formalized and say, we'd like you to do your, to, to exercise your responsibilities as a planning commission with regard to this application. And by the way, we want you to reexamine. The definition of eateries that don't offer patron area and whether it's advisable to require of them that they have patron bathrooms.
Okay, well, is that the motion, Mr. Maschinsky?
Yes.
Okay, and, and you accept the second, Mr. Stevens?
Yes, it was.
Thank you, and, and we'll go back and get word for word from Fred. What, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I ask all in favor to say aye.
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 Any against, say nay? Any abstentions? It's unanimous then. We'll forward it on to the planning and zoning committee. Mr. Maschinsky will get some, some notice to you from Mr. Townsend in the town, town hall about when that will happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the review of the March twenty twenty-one financial, and I'll go to the Mr. Zopur and Sheena Gossett for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. So I, I will run down the, the different expenditures. And revenue for, for the year and for March, starting at the top.
The, Mr. Maschinsky, you want to drop off? Okay, thank you, go ahead.
I, I also, I've asked Devon Reed from LUP Associates, who also worked with Sheena on our, on our budget. To also join the conversation in case there's a question that I cannot answer or Sheena cannot answer. So that's.
Welcome, Devon.
Hello there, it's Devon and George. How you doing?
Ready, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, oh yes, go right ahead.
Revenue expected for March is two hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars. Actual revenue for March is three hundred thirty-one thousand. Difference above expected is forty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventeen. Most of that's due to transfer tax. And again, Sheena, thanks for putting these numbers together with Devon. Expenses, expected in March.
Go ahead.
Two hundred seventy-three, eight, nine, eight. Actual expenses for March is four hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight. Difference above expected is a hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety. Those are year-end accounting entries, and I would ask Devon and Sheena at this time to explain the accrued absences, employee obligation to prepay insurance.
Is anyone else losing audio here, or is it just me?
No. I'm not, I'm, I can hear him well. Everybody else?
I don't know what's going on. All right, keep going, Bill, I'll figure him out now.
Are there any questions about that, the difference there? Because, you know, it was above at a hundred fifty-one, eight, nine, zero. Any questions from the commissioners on that?
And, and that's basically from transfer tax, right, Bill?
No. So actual expenses for the month of March is four twenty-five. Expenses expected for March was two seventy-three. So we were above by one fifty-one. I would, I thought that the commissioners would have some questions about that.
Well. Could you explain some of those accounting entries, I think, that caused that at the end of the year?
Yes, sir. So I would, I would ask at this time, if Devon or, or Sheena could describe those, starting with Devon, please.
So every year, at the end of the year, there's always. For instance, the accrued absences is a year-end adjustment that we make for the auditors. As part of the audit, they audit how much time has accrued from employees that potentially have to be paid out by the town. So at the end of the year, there's an adjustment to record. An expense for those accrued absences so that we can keep the liability account for the town accurate. Sorry, that, that was the employee obligations for the PTL, what I just described. The accrued absences is actually. The amount of monetary value of work that was done by the town employees. That wasn't paid until the following fiscal year. So it's a little higher this year because the full pay period ended in last year, but we didn't get paid until April first. So you've got a full accrue of that whole pay period in the prior year. And that washes out with what the adjustment was from last year. So what ends up happening is. You subtract out the previous year adjustment, and you add in the current year adjustment. And I think it netted about fifteen thousand dollars. So what you would find is, in April of twenty twenty, your expenses would have been lower. By forty-five thousand because of removing those expenses out of this fiscal year. But in the last month of the year, it's going to be higher by sixty thousand from pulling in the expense that's accrued or that's actual in the next. In the next fiscal year end. And then the prepaid insurance, prepaid insurance is just something we clean up at the end of the year. It's not. Very material to the books throughout the year. But at the end of the year, something again that the auditors look to be cleaned up. So we clean it up at the end of the year, once a year adjustment.
Thank you, Devon, thank you, George. Are there any questions from the commissioner, reference that explanation? Okay. I'll, I'll continue on year to, year to date revenue expected was three million, seven hundred and four, zero, five, zero. Actual year-to-date revenue was four million. One eight seven, three, seven, four. A difference of four hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-four. Any questions on that before I move on?
Next year end?
That was a difference of, yeah, expected, four eighty-three, three, twenty-four.
And I'm going to jump back once a little bit, Bill. What I meant earlier, the forty-one thousand that you first about expected. Revenue for March, the exceed the expected, that was basically transfer tax, right?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Year-to-date expenses expected was three million, five, five, zero, eight, zero, five. Actual year-to-date expenses was three, four, nine, nine, seven, two. A difference below expected, below expected by fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. Any questions on that?
Just where in general does that lower expense come from, Bill? What line item?
I, I, I think part of it was, Mayor, was that. You were no longer, for, for a period, you were no longer paying a town manager. Sheena, I mean, you want to comment on that?
It would, excuse me, it was expenses at the town. All the employees basically cut expenses throughout the year, and it. You know.
Got you.
Came through at the end. I think Mr. Persinger has a question, or he did. There he is.
Turn your mic on, Gary. Your microphone is off. There you go, go ahead. Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, good.
Go ahead.
Were you asking me to speak?
Yeah, because Sheena said you, you had your hand up.
I, I, I did. I'm not sure where you were in Bill's presentation, but I, I just had a question about the overall year-end results. Is this an appropriate time to ask that?
I, I'm almost there. I, I got two more columns, and then I'll be at the year-end results.
Okay, sounds good.
So I'll proceed. Year-to-date expected set-asides is a hundred fifty-two thousand, one, five, zero. Actual year-to-date set-asides is two hundred and one, four, five, five. Year-to-date difference expected is one thousand, ninety-five dollars. Actual year-to-date difference is four hundred. Year-to-date difference expected is $1,095. Actual year-to-date difference is 493,946. So that's the actual year-to-date difference is 493,946.
That is with the set-asides taken out.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I said, could Sheena repeat that, please? I didn't hear that.
The 493,000 to the good is after the set-asides have been taken out.
Okay, good.
Now's the time for you, Mr. Persinger, if you wanted to ask Mr. Zopur a question.
Yeah, I'm assuming that in the year-end results, all of the equipment purchases and the new parking system that we approved. Those are those are reflected here somewhere in the financials.
Sir, what we did is to make sure, because we had a few invoices that could not get to us in time. Due to whatever happened. I had pulled. There is a line item on the balance sheet. Under our general fund that says prior year. Set aside or prior year expenses, and those expenses are in there. So that they did not hit because they were approved by you got by the commissioners. As non-budgetary items. So they're in there. They are. They are on the balance sheet. Did I mess that up, Mr. Stevens?
No, you did not.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question also, Mr. Persinger. Maybe you were about to ask a question. Are you finished, Mr. Persinger?
Well, I had a couple of other questions.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just just with with respect to the the equipment purchases. So what you're saying is. It's reflected on the balance sheet and it will never show up as expenditure in a.
Correct. It has been capitalized as it should properly have been.
Okay. $37,000 that here on stormwater management, street flooding. Was that all paid for out of the infrastructure account?
Yes, sir, it was. We did transfer the funds. I am working with Commissioner Stevens next week to. Tweak our the way we account for things so that to make it better. Easier to understand where things that are paid for out of other accounts. Don't. Cloud the expenses, even though they will be accounted for as expenses.
Okay, but on the balance sheet, when when that happens, you take the money out of the infrastructure account, you credit the general fund. Is that what happens?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's that's all my questions. I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens, if you had your hand up?
Well, I just wanted to say in in regards, Gary, to that payment for the infrastructure. It could have been a payment directly out of that fund balance. Which when you know what we could do in addition, and you know, I can work on this in future, is just show changes in fund balance. To changes in infrastructure, changing planning and zoning, so we can see what doesn't hit the general operating account. But yeah, it's it will be working on for the classification entries next week, you know, I will.
Okay.
Just so, Sheena, a question to you, just so I I get a little confused now and then. I'm old and senile here. The purchases that we authorized at the end of the year have or have not been taken out of that 493,946.
No, sir, they were taken out of. An additional funds above that in your true amount before those expenses was roughly $600,000.
Right, okay, but with the expenses, it's now 493.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Per Stevens, you had your hand up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, with what we approved at the end was a use of funds. And those used to funds were for capitalized assets that will be on the balance sheet. So it was no different than us buying a cruiser. The cruiser never hits our income statement hits the balance. And so that's where those funds will flow.
I understand more now than I did then.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Zopur, you finished your?
For finances, yes, sir.
So you're finished. Is anybody? Do we have any more questions on the March 2021 financial? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. Devon, thank you so very much. I appreciate it. I miss seeing you around town hall. When are you coming in again?
Whenever we can get out of these masks.
Thank you very much, Devon. I appreciate it.
See you soon.
Thank you, Devon. Thank you, George.
Thanks, Devon.
Take care.
Thanks, George.
The next item is item number three, town manager comments.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I continue to look at the consulting firm for 5G, and right now so far it's been JMT. CityNet, which you which the commissioners spoke with, then City State. Our CTCNet and then City State. And then today I spoke with VCOM. VCOM came to my attention. The mayor or somebody had emailed me saying that they had done a good job over in Avalon, New Jersey. I spoke with the. One of the owners of the company. It's a wireless company. It's operated for about 20 years. They've given consulting in Cherry Hill, Margate, Stone Harbor, Avalon, and Kill Devil Hills, North Carolina. I'm going to email him tomorrow some of the background on our situation and ask him four basic questions, one of those being an approximate amount. That they'd be looking at. And then after that, I'll sit down with Jim Deedee and Dawn, and then we'll make a recommendation to the commissioner. Any questions on the continued search for the consultants?
No.
No, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Zopur?
Yes, I I do want to bring something to your attention, and maybe I should have brought it under the financials. So as I work with Sheena on 2022 budget, we're we're looking at trying to, when we enter that into QuickBooks, we realize that we need to make some different allocation changes. To the 2022 budget to make it more efficient and easier to manage. And let me give you an example. So we we had a financial director hired, so we budgeted for that. But now we need to move that over to continue with Luft for the rest of the year. So I I guess my question would be. To the commissioners, when we make a change like that to a budget that's already been approved, do I need to come back and and ask? The commissioners each time I'm making a change like that? And for example, we're getting the new phone system in. Right now, there's four different phone bills that come in. There's one for the annex, one for town hall, one for the lifeguard station, one over West Rehoboth. With this new phone system, we're going to have one bill that comes in that covers all four of those. But on the 2022 budget, I failed to take out those individual. Items because right now we still are getting billed. Four different times. When the new system goes into effect in the next 30 to 60 days, it's going to be just one bill. So when I make a change like that, is that something I need to come back and speak with to the commissioners about?
In my opinion, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Stevens of his opinions on this, because he's the one that been working with the. With Sheena on the budgetary process, the process in general. But in my opinion, we should at least be told it's going to happen. And and unless we have a problem with it, there would be no vote. But, Mr. Stevens, what do you think was necessary?
I'm there. I agree. Only if the change results in a material difference upon what we've already approved, which it won't. It's just a. It's an allocation issue more than anything else. But I think just letting us know it's it's fun.
Any other comments from any other commissioners? Mr. Persinger?
I I agree with that. I I agree with that.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Zopur.
So I continue to work with Del Dot to get the crosswalk down there in Chesapeake. It's been a it's been a process, but I think we are going to accomplish that mission. Hopefully before Memorial Day weekend. I'm very positive about that. Del Dot says they are working on the the conditional. Or the the contract with the town, so we can do that. So Commissioner, I will keep you posted as we progress on that. We have hired somebody part-time in the front office, so as one of our employees may be going out on maternity leave or will be going out on maternity leave. I will be moving Kate up to to help out in that role, and then we will be bringing somebody part-time. To staff the front to help Joyce with the, you know, the parking permits, the bonfires. And and the other things that we have going on up there. I just want to let you know, if you see somebody new up in the front office, that's who it is. Right now, it's just going to be for Mondays. But as we get closer to the season, we're going to bring them into work probably Friday from four until eight. And then we may bring them in on Saturdays, and and eventually they'll be working probably some core hours through the through the week once the. The individual goes on maternity leave from probably 10:00 in the morning till 2:00 in the afternoon. Any questions on that?
Go ahead, Mr. Zopur.
Okay, also, it was brought to my attention by the chief and by the alderman that our code is going to have to change for underage alcoholic consumption in town. I need to get some more information. I'll talk to Fred about that. About the actual ordinance and the tickets that are being written. We're going to need to up that to match the state code. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I didn't hear the beginning.
Mr. Stevens, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't hear the beginning. I'm sorry, Bill.
So the state code has changed on underage consumption of alcoholic beverages. We need to change our town code to reflect that, so I'll work with Mr. Townsend on that.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zopur. Go ahead.
Our maintenance folks, Don, has started to put the mats down on the dunes, but we were told to stop. At this point, Denrec is going to be replacing a lot of the fence along the dunes, and they're going to need to use their equipment going over the dune. So. We're going to have to hold on to the mats for at least two to three weeks, putting any more mats down. Any questions on that?
Go ahead, Mr. Zopur.
I'm meeting with the chief and Captain Frenchman in code enforcement on the 26th to talk about code enforcement in the town. Who's going to be responsible for what? I think we need to tweak that a little bit and have some changes done with the actual code enforcement, especially on the beach. Any questions on that?
Any questions, Commissioner? Hearing none, go ahead, Mr. Zopur.
Depending on any questions, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Paul Bauer.
Yeah, well, I want to publicly thank Speaker Swartzkoff for approving the CTF funds for two new beach wheelchairs for us. Kate Kitten, when we sent the previous one up when we did the dune mats. If you can get the same person involved there, because we probably need to submit, we already submitted the the quote from Access Rec, I think is where the wheelchairs came from. So we just want to follow that up so we get the funding back from them. So what is want to thank the speaker for for funding that for us. It's always great to get their support. And then also Don Richards. He, I don't know if you've been up on Dagsworth, but he replaced that blue mat with a nice brown one. Took it all the way to the edge, and he really did a very meticulous job, and it looks great. And can't wait to get this place ready for summer. We're probably, we may need some more. Beach lengths, I guess, but we're I'm waiting to see if we need more before I ask for more, because we can probably get get some more funding for it if we need it.
That all, Mr. Bauer?
Yeah, and thanking all the administrative staff for the job they did. Those finances look wonderful. So great job, everybody, keeping expenses down. And, you know, we were looking at things in June, July, and August last year. What a what a far cry from where what we thought might happen and where we ended up at. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bauer. Commissioner Jazinski?
No comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Persinger. Your mic is off, Mr. Persinger. Commissioner Persinger, your mic is off. There you go. Yep.
Okay. Just quickly, I from my perspective, I think it's unfortunate, the process that we went through with this conditional use application today. There was a clear legal issue. There was a clear problem with our code. And, you know, we should have, we should have caught that much, much sooner. And tried to come up with some resolution of that. The the town needs to present the commissioners with complete applications, applications that they believe. Are fully approvable and consistent with the code. That wasn't the case in this this time, and it's it's really unfair to the applicants. It's an inefficient process. In some sense, it's unfair to us, but, you know, we're probably not the most important people involved here, but I think it really is unfair to the applicants. So I think we need to do. A better job. You know, it's happened in the past, and unfortunately, I think it happened with this this conditional use application. We just need to avoid this in the future. That's all I had. All I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Persinger. Commissioner Stevens?
No comment.
Then we'll go to Mayor Cook, and and I just want to reiterate what Commissioner Bauer said about. Commissioner, excuse me, Pete Swartzkoff and Ernie Lopez. They have been absolutely outstanding helping this town. And for many, many years, and we all appreciate their help, and I want to make that comment publicly. And I want to thank the Mr. Zopur and the and the employees for all the help they've been. On finishing out last year and starting up a new year. We've got new year with with people having new babies and. And a lot going on in town, a lot of people working in town hall and doing a good job, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion move by Mr. Bauer. There's a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Jazinski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.